Um, sure. Do you want to, you want to go first?
Sure. I would like to call the planning board meeting to order. It is December 11th, 2024. I'm Carrie Martin, Chair of the Planning Board.
I'll call the select board to order with the same information.
I'm calling for the Chair of the CBA and I'll call the CBA meeting to order.
Okay. And do we have a quorum from anybody else from Master, I don't know, Master Plan has a quorum? Yeah, there you are, Rick. Okay. Okay. Great. So Rick has called the Master Plan Committee. Are there any other boards that need to be called to order tonight? Okay. We're good. A little bit of information about how the microphones will work. You pretty much need to be talking into a microphone for, to be picked up by the recording. So when it gets to the Q and A period, Kerry Solwa from CMRPC will be directing that process. If you are close to Kerry Martin and I, we will get you a microphone. If not, I'll be responsible for getting a microphone sort of handed off to you. But I'd ask, so that people at home can hear, just, is it right? Somebody would want to sit next to me, or at least be, at least be willing to. Then we'll deal with the microphones in that way. So I'd ask, not only for the people in here, but at home, don't speak up until you've got a microphone in front of you. And I don't think there are any other introductions that we need to make other than introduce Kerry Solwa from the Economic Development Director at CMRPC, who's done a lot of work, and we are very excited to hear from her.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome on this gorgeous-
Oh, I bet, do I have to say, we are being recorded?
Gorgeous evening, yes.
Part of the open meeting law thing.
Yes, exactly. For, just for my reference, if it's okay, can we introduce the people on the side of the room? So I know exactly who's in the room. Do you mind going first?
Absolutely.
Stephanie?
Sure, Stephanie.
Jane Pierce, Executive Director of Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
My boss.
Testing.
John Campbell, I'm on the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Mike, break command of me, design review.
Bob Frederico, Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer.
Fran Backstrand, Chair of the Council on Aging, Member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
John Rappa, Chair of the Financial Planning Committee.
Jeanne Cahill, Master Plan Implementation.
Lee Kimaravon, Town Administrator.
Laurie Connor is Planning Director.
And Rick Leaf, Master Plan Implementation Committee.
I think we missed Susie in the initial round of introductions.
Sorry, Susie sits like a zoning board.
Thank you. Thanks Mitch for taking care of that. So I just want to start by saying thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you for trusting CMRPC with this, to be able to participate in this conversation. I wouldn't, I would be lying if I said I wasn't a little bit apprehensive about this because I've never done something like this before with three boards. I've done it with three towns, but I've never done it with three separate boards, or four actually, if you count the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I've just, like, how hard could this be, right? It's a topic I love, in a region I care about, that I work really hard in every single day. In a meeting, in a room full of people just like me, who take their responsibilities very seriously, who take their board seats seriously, who are committed to making sure their town runs smoothly, and who are passionate, very passionate about their community. Just happens to be a public meeting that's recorded and available to everybody with my boss. There's no sweat. So Kaylee, can you hear me? Okay. Just one peanut, piece of housekeeping besides the microphones. There's a restroom here in this room that they said that that's the only restroom they would like us to use. So just so you know. Okay, so let me start with who I am and why I'm here. So I'm Kerry Solwa, like Kerry said, I'm the Director of Economic Development for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. I'll explain a little bit more about our agency in just a minute. But I was asked to participate in this forum by your former town administrator and have continued working with your new town administrator to help guide the discussion and guide the direction for the town staff in the Master Plan Implementation Committee and how they can proceed. So it is my understanding that several of the board members are on the newer side here. And I've heard a couple of times tonight already that a lot of you don't, haven't even met each other. So I'm happy to be, that, you know, you're all able to be in the same room to have this open discussion, to discuss the next steps and the priorities and then areas of focus for your town staff and your implementation committee. So over the past few years, you've all been through some planning processes. You've been through the master plan, you've been through your downtown plan, the downtown plan reports come out. You've been through, the public input has been gathered, the data's been pulled, the goals and the action items have been set. And so that's not really what we're here to do tonight. Tonight, my plan is to give you a little bit of background on what I've been working on, give you a high-level overview of, of what I've gathered over the past couple of weeks, and make sure I'm on the same page with you so that we can guide this touchy, guide this conversation. So for those of you at home watching this recording, the folks in this room here, because they are either on the select board zoning board, or a planning board, or Master Plan Implementation Committee, this is a posted meeting, it's being recorded, and, just so everybody knows. So again, my name is Kerry, this is the, this is my contact information, should you want it, or should you want to contact me after this or follow up, anything on the discussion here, and you'll all be, these slides will be available for all of you also. So CMRBC is your local regional planning agency. I like to give this prompt before every meeting because you would not be surprised how many people don't know what a regional planning agency is. We have wonderful services that we provide to our communities for little to no, touchy, little to no cost. And I share this also in case you need any of these services in the future. But CMRBC is one of 13 regional planning agencies across the Commonwealth. Our agency has two divisions, Community Planning and Transportation. We provide support to 40 communities in Southern Western County, as you can see the map in the corner. We are close to 60 staff. We've doubled in size since I started six and a half years ago. We assist our member communities with land use, transportation planning, economic development, regional coordination, public engagement, facilitation, climate and energy planning. We offer technical assistance and a whole host of other local and regional issues. The scope of this project was set up to identify a strategy to move Northborough forward in consensus. CMRPC was tasked to interview individual board members, key stakeholders, and facilitate this group dialogue to discuss the findings and develop economic development priorities. The strategy included background research, survey, a survey, interviews, group discussions, and we'll provide a summary document after this evening. The project was slated to be a 24-hour project, which is kind of hysterical because I've been in Northborough for weeks now. I literally close my eyes and only see Northborough. I've had the opportunity, actually the privilege, to sit down and hear all of the good things about your community. I've looked through both of your plans. I've had maybe a dozen meetings with individuals. We've solicited a survey. I was given a lovely downtown walking tour. I've been in almost every square inch of 4 West Main Street and around, almost around the whole property at White Cliffs, thanks to the DPW and the police for those, letting me into those properties. I've heard about your trails, your farms, your shopping plaza, your festivals, your schools, your roadways, your traffic flow, and your potential projects. I've had coffee at almost all of your coffee shops. I've even had my first French bistro experience. And from my 24-hour perspective, there are loads of really good things happening in Northborough. There's opportunities for days, and I've also sifted, oh, through your 147-page financial summit slide deck. So I feel intimate with your financial status here. I'm not going to, probably not going to tell you anything that you don't already know, but these are good economic development facts to have in your back pocket. Let me see, Northborough is 18 square miles, population of almost 1,600. You have over 800 businesses. Does that surprise anybody? You have, this is a group, this is a list of your 11 most, your 11 largest employers. I always say to make sure you're very good to the group. Your inflow for, for employees is over 7,000, 7,500 to be exact, or 7,588. And your outflow is 5,400. So those are employees coming in and out every day. Your median household income is 1.5 times higher than those in Massachusetts. So, different slide. So these were, I'm just going to jump to some downtown sites of interest. These were, some of these were pointed out in your downtown plan and in your master plan. So it looks like you've had pockets of development over the past decade, starting with Avalon and then the Northborough Shops, and then the Bartlett Street projects, or the Bartlett Street Warehouse and Distribution Centers. Here are some of the areas I came across that sounded like they had developability. A lot of fire stations, old fire stations and old, old fire stations, soon-to-be-old fire stations and a brand-new fire station. The brand-new fire station coming around Main Street and the property prior, the property before the Main Street Fire Station could be considered your gateway into downtown. You have the, is it okay to call it Millies Fire Station? There's Millies Fire Station, there's the old fire station. So I'm just pointing these out as, you're very familiar with these properties. Oh, man, so touchy. We have the, the property that starts on Main Street, the Old Bank, connects, could potentially connect to Gale Street. On Gale Street, you have a playground, a park, with some trails and parking, creating what could be a walking loop there. Coming back around, you have a load of professional buildings on South Street that I think really fit the downtown perfectly. On Pierce Street, you have the current fire station that has potential reuse, the 4 West Main, which I could talk about for days. The Blake Street Project, which I believe is in design right now. And then over here, down Main Street, you have the White Cliffs property. And I just want to note on, on these slides that you see the Aqueduct Trail, pointing to the Aqueduct Trail. So I also had a chance to meet one of the gentlemen from your Trails Committee, who was nice enough to walk through the Trails Maps with me. You've got loads, loads of trail systems in your town already, and it has really proven to be an economic driver. They have data to prove it now, that the impact of trails on communities, especially in downtowns. And this, what I thought was worth noting, I'm just going to segue into this to touch on just a bit, very briefly. But I feel it's important, and there's conversations in Boston that are happening right now that I think could really have effect here in Northborough. I don't think, I think it's a conversation for another day, but like I said, I think it's worth noting. What you have here on the left is a slide of the, watch, it's the Aqueduct Trail that's going through Berlin. As you see, it comes into Northborough. On top of the multicolored trail over here, you see Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3. That's the Mass Central Rail Trail. On the, this, which the state is really pushing to finalize that trail. If you see in Berlin where the two connect, you can hop off the Mass Central Rail Trail and connect you eventually. And then you'd be able to connect into Northborough from, through the Aqueduct. There's a lot of discussion, I know, with Westboro right now on potentially connecting into Westboro there as well. In the slide, in the photo on the right, this is the red, the red, what's, looks like the red line on the T, but the red trail on the right is the Mass Central Rail Trail. And I do think it's worth noting, if you see where the Mass Central Rail Trail comes in through Berlin, you can see Northborough on the map. It has potential to connect into nine other trail systems already. And one of them not noted here is the East-West Rail, East, no. The East, what's it called? East Coast. The one that goes from Maine to Florida. There's a, there's a rail trail that goes, there's a, a trail system being built. East Coast Rail, East Coast Rail. Okay, I was right, yeah. So it's, it goes from Florida to Maine, but it has the potential to, it's going to connect in Berlin and it has the potential to come into Northborough. So one of the data points that have been, that was proven last year was the, having, having a rail trail system in and around your downtown, or in, in your town, is a driver, and it's close to, can provide up to four and a half million visitors if this Mass Central Rail Trail is built out annually. And it has the potential to bring in over $140 million worth of new economic activity. So while I have all the boards here, just, just so you know, this is, this is eventually going to be coming down the pike, and it could be very beneficial for your downtown redevelopment. One other thing I just wanted to notice, note, as we were going through Northborough, you do have the two photos here which show your gateways from Route 9 and Route 20. So the traffic flow on this road is over 50,000 people daily. So these are two properties that could potentially have development potential in the future. Again, just thought it was worth noting. So these are some, the next four slides are from your Master Plan Implementation, your Master Plan and your Downtown Plan. So loads of objectives, I think you had, your Master Plan alone had 12 pages of objectives, or of goals and objectives, 110 goals. And over 71 of them have already been categorized as either completed, underway, or ongoing. And I think that's massive, because it was only done in 2020. So a lot has already been accomplished. So some of these highlighted, you'll notice, were in the memo, the Master Plan Implementation Committee memo that was sent to the boards not too long ago. That's why they're highlighted, something we can discuss after. And here's some, some objectives from your Downtown Plan. Hire an experienced downtown manager, create a downtown management organization, create a downtown campaign, a sign and facade program, it's very popular, very hard to fund, but very popular. Improve the aesthetics. Review the zoning, establish new development partners, improve public infrastructure, pursue adaptive reuse for 4 West Main, adaptive reuse for the Northborough Fire Station, as we talked about earlier, and improve parking and transportation. Expand the downtown merch, expanding, consider expanding a downtown merchant association. Infrastructure improvements, attracting new business, and potentially creating a bid. So this, we, like, as I mentioned, part of our research was to start, was to solicit a survey. So we, a lot, a number of you, 18 of you have filled out this survey. It was sent to the Select Boards, zoning board, planning board, and I believe the Master Plan Implementation Committee as well. So these are some results from the questions that were, that were sent out. So how would you rate the current economic health in Northborough? Where 49% fair, 19 poor, and 32 responded good? Are there any barriers preventing local business from expanding or attracting new businesses in the community? 75% of you said yes, there are local barriers, or there are barriers. And 25 said they weren't really sure. What types of businesses or industries are most needed in the community to promote economic growth? 87.5% said hospitality and restaurants. That was very, it was also came up in a number of the conversations I had with some of you. 68% said entertainment, and 50% said retail. How do you feel about the idea of adding more housing? 38% said they were somewhat opposed, 19% said strongly opposed, 19% said strongly support, and 13% said they neither support or oppose, and, or somewhat support. So that's an interesting conversation. Also, a number of the conversations that I had came across as people would potentially like to see pockets of housing in downtown, not necessarily large-scale multifamily housing, but where it seemed appropriate or mixed use. If you are opposed or concerned about new development, what are the main reasons? Number, number one was obviously the negative impact on schools and public services. Preservation of community character was second, and increased traffic and congestion was third. What types of any development, what types of development, if any, do you support? The number-one answer was the reuse of existing vacant or underutilized buildings. Replacement of existing vacant, underutilized, or outdated buildings with new buildings. So obviously, there's a theme here. And construction of new commercial buildings on undeveloped land was 13%. And what do you think are the most important economic development priorities? Number one is develop a local economic development plan, something CMRPC would be happy to help you with. Establish, half of it's already here, establish an economic development committee. We have worked with, we've started several economic development committees in the past six years, and some of them fare pretty well, fare very well in their communities and can really make a difference. Fund and hire an experienced economic development coordinator. This came up in multiple conversations I had as well. It seems like it's something the town was really leaning, leaning towards. Maybe once the priorities are put together and there's some direction. And then, again, repurpose or sell surplus municipal buildings. What local government actions do you support to encourage growth local, in the local economy? And again, one was to establish an economic development committee, develop an economic development plan, and sell and repurpose underutilized municipal buildings. These are some photos of town-owned properties that we, I've, we already discussed. And then these are some of discussion questions I thought that we could kind of turn the table now that you've heard enough from me. But now it would be great to hear from you on some of these questions. So first and foremost, it does, it does sound like there's significant interest in either an economic development coordinator or starting an EDC. Is that something that you feel strongly about here, this group? This role would be to support businesses, solicit new businesses, market your community, possibly run social media, a lot of them can run social media, kind of just move the needle on some of the priorities that you have put in place.
So before we, thanks for that.
Yeah, no problem.
Before we get, I just want to make sure to help guide the discussion.
Sure.
We just align on our goals of this meeting.
Okay.
So it sounds like the goal of this particular meeting is for all the boards to get together so that staff has a better understanding of what the boards want. Laurie, would you mind speaking to particular goals that would help you tonight? So that we, I want to want the conversation, I want the conversation to be, you know, helpful at the end. We come up with things that make-
You can use mine.
I'm thinking it may be easier for those of us who are sitting on the side to use this mic. So then you guys don't have to share yours. So from my perspective, what I'm hoping to get from this meeting is for, for you all to come to a consensus on what your economic development priorities are for us to then implement. So of course, as you know, and as was shown in the PowerPoint slide, there are a whole slew of goals and actions associated with those goals that are economic development-related. And of course, Bob and I have regular meetings with people who are interested in coming into the town. And the question that they always ask is, what does the town want? And so far, that hasn't really been clear to me, and I, I don't think it's clear to Bob. So if you folks could come to a consensus on how you feel about these things, then it'll be easier for us to give you what you want. So that's, that's my goal. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I think that helps frame it a little bit. And then to keep things in order, we have about till 9 o'clock or an hour and a half, so 8:30, we have about an hour for discussion. So Mitch, we talked about your, the microphone you're going to go around with.
Sure.
So it sounds like, Carrie, you have these questions, this is great. So as you ask them, if you want, Mitch, like, if board members, if you want to just pop your hand up. We don't want to over-chair this meeting and prevent a conversation. So Mitch and I talked about, we're not going to really have any formal, through-the-chair type things. If you put your hand up, Carrie will kind of acknowledge you to some extent. Mitch has the mic. If there's someone in the audience that has a question, if you just put your hand up, we can, I'll keep an eye out there and get you up on the mic here. But primarily, we want to hear from the, it sounds like Laurie's looking for us to hear from the different boards in terms of our opinions on what our goals are for the town in Northborough. Does that sound fair? Everyone good? Mitch, I'm going to lose my voice here. I'm happy to use, pass the mic around. Whatever it was.
Sure.
We don't want to take this away from Mitch. He was a former White Cliffs-
AV geek is the appropriate title, but I'll hand the baton to you, Carrie.
Thank you. Does anyone, would anybody like to start the conversation? Any comments on the economic development coordinator, economic development plan?
I mean, I'll, Susie, yeah, good.
So I, I'll start, I'm on the zoning board, but I also chair the Community Affairs Committee. So we plan fun in Northborough, so we plan a lot of the large-scale events. And during COVID, we kind of switched our hats because we couldn't have events. So we planned contests, we wanted to be there for, for the small businesses. So we kind of planned contests and different things to be there for the small businesses, and they would just participate either. We planned one for the restaurants during March, Munchy Madness. So on Northborough residents, if they had a receipt, they could upload it to participate. Another one was a house decorating contest, which the same houses were always winning. So we just do a map now. And anyone watching, you can participate until, upload your address, and you can be on the map until Friday at 11:00. So I'm just going to put that plug in now. But we just did it, and we asked local businesses to donate something for $20, and we gave them free advertising. It was little things like this. And businesses wanted to be involved, something that we heard. And we went door-to-door, like, we, we went door-to-door to every restaurant. We contacted as many small businesses as we could, and they wanted an economic development committee. They wanted something like what you're talking about, a coordinator. They, they still want it. They're like, have you talked to anybody? It's like, it's like, three, you know, four years later. And I'm like, um, no, you know, like, because we took a step back. We went back to our regular thing, planning fun again. But I know that the, that the businesses want that, you know, so they're looking for that. So I just want to, you know, I think the businesses, I think they would look forward to something like that. Or an organizer, there also was a trolley, you guys might remember the trolley event. We don't have the bandwidth to do that in December, the beginning of December, where they went business to business. But I think the thirst is there for the businesses to have a central organization by the town to help coordinate that. So wearing that hat as also a zoning member, I think that would be helpful. So that's my two cents.
That's great feedback, actually. They, the businesses really, they really appreciate somebody who can take the time to do that. How many people are on your committee?
Right now, eight. We're in need of a ninth person. But we, yeah, we work, we work hard. We're hustlers, I like to say.
It's no joke. I do it in my town, it is no joke.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Hi.
Thank you. John Ray, Financial Planning Committee Member. There's two things I think about. One is, how do we make Northborough easier to do business with? For businesses who want to promote, how we do that. That's important to me. The other is, we've got 495, 290, Route 20, and the Mass Bike. We're so lucky. We're so lucky. And how do we think about taxing the fight way? So like industrial, not commercial, industrial. And I think about that. And I think about how do we increase our tax revenue? And one of the things Mitch and I have talked about is those companies, Amazon and such, they are not owned, it's leased. So they're taxed at two-thirds of the value. How do you recognize the economic value we're providing to these companies? So I'd really like a conversation on that.
That's definitely a valid point. One of the things that came into my mind going through this, my 24-hour research, you can do industrial development plans or commercial development plans separate from an economic development plan with a sole focus on commercial and industrial development. And I think that could be a good step for Northborough moving forward. Kind of separate the two and just do an analysis on it, see what it comes up with. But that's definitely a valid point.
We've got a few hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Hi, Amy Karski, planning board. For me, I wouldn't want to guess and say what I'd want to come forward to our board because there are so many businesses out there that are new and innovative. So I would really want them, if they go to, you know, Lori and Bob, and they're not sure, I think they should come in front of our board and do a start call. Is this something that the board would approve, disapprove? I just wouldn't want to turn anyone away and guess.
As far as, as far as a new business or as far as somebody who's moving forward with the development proposal?
I mean, either. If somebody wants to come in front of our board, I wouldn't want to say, well, the planning board doesn't want that, so let's turn them away. Because I think everyone is new and innovative. And it should just come in front of us for a start call versus telling businesses, oh, the board doesn't want to see that. Because maybe it is something we would want to. I think it's hard to guess and say tonight, these are the businesses we want, these are the businesses we don't want, because we don't know who's coming forward. At least in my opinion.
Yeah, okay. One of the, one, another thought that came to mind was a development review. I think I talked about, about this. But a development review board that would go informally at the town hall with police, fire, building, planning, the town administrator, have everybody around a table and come in preliminary plans before they spend a lot of money and gauge the, not necessarily gauge the interest, but see if there's going to be any pitfalls or something. They can spend a lot of their time and energy before they even come to a board. That could be something that would be worth pursuing or looking into, I think. Bob, I'm just going to go to Carrie first, and then you can have it, okay?
So for this, the economic development piece, I thought it was really interesting in the survey. I know who I filled the survey out, but I obviously didn't have the benefit of seeing everybody else. It's really interesting how close we are in what we thought was most important, even though we are on all different boards. Obviously, we had some variances at the bottom. But those top-line items, I thought, was a pretty big swath of the boards, which is great. The one thing I wanted to bring up was if everybody remembers during COVID, there was nothing for our small businesses or businesses in town. There was no consolidated guide or resource or who could they talk to. I think a lot of us on these boards, I remember scrambling with a couple of you at the time, like, how do we get resources to businesses? How do we work together? How do we connect them? And I don't, I think we're at a point in the world where we can't not have an economic development resource, whether it's building or downtown or just that person in town that they know, you know, is there for them when they need it. That's for existing businesses. And then, of course, there's recruiting and whatnot for new. But even for the businesses that we have, retention. How many businesses have we seen leave downtown? Coffee shops empty down there now? So, you know, just retention, recruitment, customer service, bringing that level in. I know Mitch, you had something to your, cut in front of you there.
Sorry. A couple of things just following up on, on your prompts. The type of businesses that interest me the most are what I would call quality-of-life businesses, retail-related, restaurants, small shops, clothing, anything like that. Those are not primarily tax-revenue-driven. We have parts of town that I think could be primarily tax-revenue-driven for different reasons. And those are probably some of the areas that you were thinking about. But the downtown, to thrive more, needs more reason for people to go downtown. And there's, there are some great businesses there. We need a lot more of them for it to really catch on. I've mentioned to a couple of people before tonight and definitely earlier this evening, when I moved to Northborough, I was shocked that there was no economic development committee or economic development coordinator. I think we really should have both, and it can provide so much benefit to the businesses and to the community and to the boards and committees. One of the things that I would love to see from a board standpoint is some ideas to the board, the new businesses that are coming in. I saw something on Facebook the other day about a cricket simulator business that just opened up next to Hillside Grill. It's, it's pretty, pretty neat. And so I. Crickets, cricket like the, the flat baseball bat is the best way I can describe it. And it would have been great for there to be an email sent out that says, hey, this, this business just pulled some permits. This is what they're working on, so we were aware. And then we can stop in, introduce ourselves to the business owner and things like that, which I eventually went and did. And then that owner then had some questions for me about the permitting process and what's allowed and what's not allowed and how best to sort of do business with Northborough. And we don't really have anyone that can act as that advocate. We have, we have building, certainly we have building officials who have a very important job. But someone to sort of act as a translator whose job it is not to actually issue the permits, but can, can guide through that process and be in the middle and can help matchmaking between a business, a potential business owner and a property owner. And those are things that we, we really don't have. We have people that are willing to do that as part of a big list of responsibilities, but no one that is really, yeah, no one that really is responsible for that. So those are some of the, some of the reasons I think we should really have both, because both a staff person and a committee can help, can help do those things.
Who's on the PTO?
Yes.
I want to back up just a couple of points when they were talking about the idea of like a technical review committee, if somebody has an idea, if they come to the town and sit down and talk about it. We have that.
Yes, we mentioned.
It's actually in the zoning bylaws. And Lori and I, whenever somebody comes to us with an idea, we say, here's somebody who is interested in coming to town. Let's have a meeting. And we bring in all the people who count that are going to have to deal with. Okay, we bring in DPW, we bring sometimes the taxpayer. We're bringing the fire and police departments, okay? And we kind of form a committee of who we think is going to want to talk to these people, okay? And who we think would beneficial to talk to the applicants. We have a meeting. It's not publicized, but anybody could come in any time. It's not a formal hearing. It's just a sit-down chat. And they bring their ideas to us, and we say, well, you know, you can do this, do this. Maybe think about doing it this way to approach, to make their approach to permitting easier. Because I will tell you that over the past seven years, the use allowances in this town have shrunk and gotten more tight. And as soon as we tell people, well, you're going to have to go to the planning board. You've got to go to the ZBA. You've got to do this. Your faces change complexion. Okay? We do everything we can to help guide these people. Tell us what you want. This is what you need to do, okay? You want to do this? This is the pathway, and we're happy to give it to them. And we're happy to work with them along the permitting process, filling out forms, getting the information ready, getting papers ready to go to the boards. It's all well and good, okay? But we do need somebody to act, not as a permit expediter, because that's not going to happen. We are responsible for permits. And the boards are. But we need somebody to go out there and market the town and to tell these applicants what the town is looking for. Now Mitch said, there's been so many kind of floating around being able to do that. But they don't have a direction. And somebody's going to step up and give the economic advisory person a direction, okay? And if you're going to, if you're going to talk with this direction, this committee, you've got to do it soon, because the other towns are ahead of you.
Thanks, Bob. Lisa Selle, select board. I think that we have to start being a little bit more innovative in our approach to finding need and working on the need. Years ago, there was an industrial development person who did all the development down on Bartlett Street. And that was their focus, and they got a lot of warehouses. I don't know that the warehouses were the best things for us, but that was certainly what was being presented back then. Today, for me and my looking for a need, is that there's an awful lot of children and parents of children with autism. So that reaching out and creating an educational area that would have, was it an OT, a pediatrician, an ABH therapist, a BCBA, neuro-optometrist, neuro-optimist rehab therapist. There's a whole section of different jobs that there's a great need for. I know Southborough is doing a lot just with their autism program. But I think, yeah, but I think that's for really, really, you know, children with real disabilities. Yes, who can live there. They've taken over an awful lot of the fable area. But I, but in my case, I have a grandson, Zay, who's just tiny on the autism spectrum. And she's gone through all of these people, my daughter, to get him help. And, and they're important. And I don't know that there's, she has got Vegas, there's one up in Vegas, and she talked to me about New Horizons and up in Concord, Massachusetts, Concord, New Hampshire. But we have a great need for that. It would be something that if there was going to be somebody to go out and try to focus bringing people in, for me, it would be education, not necessarily just that, but education because it brings more people in. Less, I should say, less impact to the town services and such like that. But that, what would, what would make Northborough a little bit different? Certainly, we have our trails, which is great. We don't really highlight that as much as we should. But the warehousing was what we were doing maybe 10 years ago, maybe 20 years ago. That was an actual decision? Yes.
Brad Blanchett, zoning board. And just to piggyback on what Lisa said, I used to be in that industry. So I mean, the numbers are astounding. One in 39 children have autism. One in six are on the spectrum in some shape or form. Those numbers continue to go up, and there's a demand there for that. The thing I was thinking of when I filled out the survey is, if you think about surrounding towns, we've got the New England Hockey Complex. It's the largest complex in North America. We have a baseball complex on Route 20 near Route 9. A couple other towns around us, Stone, Mansfield, Sudbury, they have basketball complexes. We have Four Kicks. I think there's a huge demand for that. I'm a little biased because I coach and my kids are in the sports. But you drive by any of these complexes in season, they're always jam-packed. And there's always a demand for more courts, more ice, more fields, et cetera. And going back to what the survey said as well, it's not going to have much of an impact on our school system. They're going to come in for the weekends, for whatever, vacations, spend money, stay at some hotels. You can use that Route 9 space for hotels, for the baseball complex, and then they're gone. You look at Marlboro, what they did with the complex, Apex. They come in, fill the hotels, fill the restaurants, fill the shopping areas, and then they're gone. And they're relatively near major highways, so there's not a huge traffic impact on our downtown or even Marlboro's downtown.
Yeah, you should build a field hockey complex so that I don't have to trek 40 minutes twice a week. No, that's a, it's a very solid point. That, that field is not going anywhere either, right? I feel like it's growing at a clip. And that hockey complex fills the hotel in Berlin. I think they said 99% of the time in full capacity. Yeah, that's nuts. And there is one other thing that I'm not sure. I don't think I mentioned it during the trail slide. But with the trail impact, there's, they're saying there's a risk of 360,000 overnight stays being needed in central Massachusetts. And that is, we are now considered a hotel desert. We are considered a hotel desert. So it's definitely worth looking into both of those.
I just have a comment. I wanted to pick up on what Amy said. First of all, my name is Julianne Hirsch, select board. I think what Amy said is, is important because I have thought since COVID that commerce has changed drastically. And we really don't know what the, what the future is going to be. It's nice to say we want some little retail shops, but are the, are those kinds of things actually surviving? And, and therefore, I think a lot of the innovation is going to come from people with ideas coming to our planning board, our planner, town planner, and zoning officer. And, you know, for maybe the planning board to just even know what, what kind of ideas people are coming forward with, it's an education for us as well. But, but the other thing I wanted to mention in our resources and our highlights of Northborough is that we do have a beautiful or potentially beautiful river. How about?
Oh, you get their questions back there?
Oh, sure.
That's all right. I'm like. Come on. There we go. Sorry. Kaylee fixed it for me so that it wouldn't timeout like that. Who's first over here?
I am. John Mar with the ZBA. I think, you know, from a, when you kind of just drop in on this plan, it can kind of feel fairly daunting and far-reaching and all-encompassing and trying to balance between the economical and social impacts for the community. I think that the town of Northborough has great resources. I think we've got an educated population. I think we've got really strong household income levels and the like. And it's a great opportunity. Where I have questions on is really, you know, considering the large-scale aspect of this initiative. You know, what is the ED coordinator? Is this someone that we can, you know, spend some money, invest in for their expertise? Whether they have actual, you know, real case studies applied? I know the downtown Hudson is widely acclaimed as being an overwhelming success. So there's just questions on that. But it just seems like this is such an all-encompassing kind of project that we feel, I feel at least, that we need some sort of central management component to it.
Yeah, hi, Mike Teigen, select board. Yeah, I think there's broad support for economic development, you know, certainly committee. We'd have to make a decision if we want, you know, a paid staff member to do that. You know, I would, I would prefer going the committee route first. And then if there's, you know, more speed needed, you know, maybe seeing if there's a paid position in there. Because that's salary, that's benefits. Other departments are always asking for headcount as well. You know, kind of where my head goes, you know, having a revitalized downtown would be, would be, would be nice, would be great. But how much of our residents' property taxes are we going to spend on that? And sort of for what end, right? The warehouses come with other issues, but they do help, you know, the, the property tax base. You know, other, other development that may not be as popular now as maybe when it was proposed does help with the property tax base. You know, I think we're all for businesses coming in and for somebody to help facilitate that. I'm, I'm just concerned about the other expenses that this town has. We're building an expensive fire station. We're going to build an expensive, or try to build an expensive school. Probably need a new middle school or updated one at some point in the future. Town Hall, Owen White Cliffs, and all these other things. So that's, that's where my, my main concern lies. Also, you know, Northborough is the town it is because of, you know, people moved here to raise their families because of the schools, because of the services that the town provided. You know, for everybody from police, fire, DPW on down. A revitalized downtown is nice, and I would like somebody to be able to try and coordinate that. But it has, it has to get in line with the other priorities in the pecking order. So I think we need to be, need to be careful about how much we're going to ask our, our taxpayers to spend on this. Because I think a lot of, you know, there's a lot of communities in the Commonwealth that are a lot more walkable, have a lot more housing in downtown areas that have a lot of empty storefronts. There's, there's a lot of empty storefronts everywhere. And, you know, are there market conditions, demographic conditions, that even if you pour money onto it, you're not going to get the economic bang for your. I, I would love to see that type of analysis if it's, if it's possible, but thank you.
Just a quick note, the, everybody wants to be Hudson.
Well, not necessarily.
No, I know, but they say, you say that Hudson is the, is the Marsha Brady of communities in central Massachusetts. It's like, everybody wants to be Hudson, 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 or like Putnam, Putnam, Putnam. I love Northborough too. But, you know, Hut, if the Hudson plan would tell you that Hudson is, was like 17 years in the making, that's what she says all the time. The rail trail, the business improvement district, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes behind that to get where it is, and this right here is a huge start. Having these, these three groups together, have an open conversation like this is, is a huge start. Okay.
Jack Carney, zoning board. I'm going to go a little bit left of that, Hudson. Our downtown, downtown is not walkable. It's not usable, it's not user-friendly. There's not enough businesses, whether retail, restaurant, there's empty spaces, buildings have been taken down, we have the new common, I guess we're going to call it. We're putting a large fire station in the middle of downtown, which is, i- it's not friendly. So personally, I think our main emphasis should be on the gateway, that can provide more bang for the buck. I'd like to see that. I don't think the housing. I live on, up off of Howard, you know, there's 25 acres around me, four houses. So this, the restrictiveness of the zoning years ago has restricted what kind of housing you're going to have. So the, the bang to me is going to be the commercial, or the industrial, or the, on the outside, outskirts of town, or the gateway. And build up those areas to try to build up our tax base.
Thank you, Jacob Jones, ZBA. I wanted to really just echo, agree, and if I have a consensus with someone here, it was Mike's comments and now Jack's comments, and those others I agreed with as well, but I really, Mike was just speaking my mind a second ago, I wanted to say that. Specifically addressing a couple of these questions, where my mind is, I am, I would be opposed without seeing a lot of really hard data to justify the line item on our town budget, a, a staff, an additional staff member. I would not be opposed to having a volunteer committee, and as Mike said, if it leads to us gathering data to say, actually, it is justified, then I could get behind it. Right now, I'm not behind that. The, the additional staff member, I'm, I'm a very budget-conscious person, as I'm sure we all are, so I need to see justification before I want to get behind additional town budget commitments. The, the point about downtown, I mean, I've, I've seen inconsistent goals in our plan that want downtown to be walkable and be drivable, and those are just inconsistent goals. And we've got a thoroughfare there that it's got to be able to have traffic, traffic flow, where we're going to have a lot of upset people. So those are really inconsistent goals that I don't think can both be accomplished. I'm not against developing and revitalizing downtown, but one thing, and I could be confusing my towns, I reviewed the materials about Hudson and Marlboro and Vichburg, I think that were circulated, and I thought it was that Hudson actually had a group of business owners who came together, and the business owners paid their own fees to this collaboration to do things that predictably would help those businesses. I think that that's a fine idea, but I don't think that, I, I'm not in favor of saying, well, not seeing the impetus of businesses wanting to do that on their own, why should the town do that for them? That's kind of, I don't mean to sound too harsh about that, but that's my thought about that. I would, to the, to our staff members, if, if we had anyone who wanted to do anything development-wise with White Cliffs, or with the soon-to-be, not as old, old fire station, that would allow us to get those into the hands of private enterprise in a way that we can have some involvement with and direction with, I'm all for all ears to see how we can solve those things. I know there's a lot of difficulties with old buildings and non-conformities and things like that. Those are areas that I would like to be able to find solutions for. If, if anyone said, hey, I have an idea for these properties, I'm all interested in getting some of those, I call them liabilities, off of the town's balance sheet. Someone may disagree and say they're big assets, but I think they're liabilities. Town Office for Main Street, I'm perfectly for that. I know there was an entire feasibility study about that, and I don't want to get into detail, but I think that that's a great place for it. I've talked a lot, thanks.
Hi, Paul Tidy, Faria, ZBA. I was wondering if you could just kind of go through the pros and cons of having an economic development coordinator versus a committee? Is a committee like the, sort of the first step for towns that don't have anything before we sort of go out on a limb and hire someone that is a, you know, a staff head count?
I would say yes. You, if you have an economic development committee that has goals and has direction and has the support of the, the boards, then they can be very powerful. And not powerful, I shouldn't say powerful, they can be very effective. Typically, it's like a Realtor, a banker, there's a, you know, there's a diverse group, a, a business owner, a small business owner. I have an economic development committee that I work with that has done an entire sign-and-facade program on their own. There's some that do business surveys. We have one that just started an entire social media campaign and has already had such, such an impact on their town. So there's, with, with guidance, they can be very effective.
So I do think it's a, you made some great points there. One thing I worry about, though, is for every committee we come up with, staff has to support it and be the liaison, the person. So Lori, this, you don't have to answer this, but are you going to be the person?
Yeah. I had that very conversation with the Master Plan Implementation Committee when it came up, and I already have five committees. So one of the things that I said to them is I cannot staff that committee. Either that, or I need to lose a committee, or two, because it's just too much for the work-life balance to be out three days every single week.
Would there be a consideration to potentially share an economic development coordinator with another community at first, maybe? Try that out and see if you can share the cost, if some of our towns can do that.
Yeah, we do a lot of regionalization with, with other aspects, if that makes sense.
Fran Backstrom, Master Plan Implementation Committee. Everybody has some specific ideas, but unless we have a plan, and you're talking about guidance from the boards, which is what, what, what we need, so I don't know how individuals talking about what their priorities are or thoughts are is going to be helpful. I mean, I wasn't a fan of the common, I wasn't a fan of buying White Cliffs, but we have them, now I want to use them in the best way we can. We have competing interests within the boards, and again, economic development is important. An economic development coordinator is not, is no different than when Lori came before the Select Board to talk about sewer expansion, right? Because there was a business, it would help businesses. Whether it was an economic development coordinator or our planning director, it, you know, they had to decide that. Now, if it had come before planning, would they have decided differently? I mean, it's really hard to bring people forward if they don't know. I don't think the straw poll thing, I don't know, I don't know how that would work, but I mean, this meeting is supposed to come to start building consensus of what are our priorities, what is that we want? Or what is it that we want to see Northborough become? And not us, it's not Franville, so it's not what Fran wants, it's what I think is in the best interest for the majority of the people, or what I, or what we believe the town should look like. But I'm hoping we're going to get to, or if not tonight, you're going to build some model and come back and tell us, right?
Yeah. Ask you one. Ask my boss.
There's 24 of them.
Bill Pierce, Planning Board, also on the Traffic Safety Committee, and Fran took my thunder. That's exactly what I was going to say. I think, you know, you were talking about guidance, and, you know, I heard just from all of these great comments, five that would directly conflict each other, right? And I think that's our problem, right? It's not that we don't have any great ideas, we have too many of them. And if we are going to do something like a coordinator, or a committee, or something like that, you have to back them fully. If you don't, they won't be able to do anything, and if they're ineffective, we're ineffective. And it really just comes down to that.
Hi, Eric Lee, MPIC. Just to keep following up on these last two comments, which I agree with, I think the next most important thing to come out of this is a plan for how to develop a plan. For example, there were some really good comments made about the fact that a really good reuse of the existing baseball fields could be some sort of a sports athletic complex, which would draw people into that area of town, which would support hotels and restaurants and things like that. And we have infrastructure issues down in that part of town that would need to be addressed. So the plan could talk about if we do want to attract those kinds of businesses to that part of town, how and when are we going to improve the infrastructure, so when people want to come in and establish, they have what they need. And the plan would say step one would be there's an agreement over time to fund a certain amount of work to develop the infrastructure necessary to then allow these people to come in. And then if an economic development committee is formed, and part of the plan says we want to attract this kind of business to that Route 9, Route 20 corridor, there is going to be the work done to make it reasonable to do it, and then the committee could start to think about how exactly could that happen. In the absence of that plan, having the committee come back and basically say, you know, we recommend two big hotels on Route 9, and the next step is we have to install infrastructure to support them, it'd be easier if the committee was told, the infrastructure will be there, go figure out how to use it the best way for the town. And there are other examples, like in the downtown area, there's been debate back and forth about housing and how much housing, we heard from the consultants, that the developers to come in and do retail or restaurants, they're going to talk about that kind of stuff on the first floor and residential above, that's how they make money on the plan. So we don't need to decide exactly what that looks like, but the development plan should talk about what our position is in the downtown as far as mixed commercial, restaurants, and residential. So my feeling is the plan is the next most important part, and hopefully, at the end of this meeting, there'll be a way to start to talk about how to do the plan, and then, once we have a plan, we can appoint either a committee or a coordinator.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Todd Helwig, I'm Conservation Commission, but I'm really here based on my day job. I try not to be as negative as I usually come across. So the, my basic point is I don't think an economic coordinator makes any sense at this time. And my day job is a commercial real estate attorney. I work with other commercial real estate attorneys, both at my firm and other firms across the state, and the answer is if somebody comes to our office, they say they want to do business in Northborough, it's like, don't even bother. Right? That's right off the top, don't, don't even, don't spend any money.
That's what you tell them?
That's what I tell them. I've told them that, I've said it at least three times this year, a lot, just me, other people in my office have had similar conversations. The reason is, and it might be by design, right? I'm not, it's a judgment call, right? But, but it is a lot of money to hire lawyers and surveyors and wetlands consultants and everybody else to come to prepare the plans to come, and it's pretty much the case, you're going to get no. Or worse, you're going to file the application and you're going to get strung along for, for months, hearing after hearing after hearing after hearing, then you're denied. And so the word is out there, that do not come here, go to, go to Marlboro, right? Because there's other places where it is much easier to get it done, and your investment will work. And how, like I said, if we're trying to make the community residential primarily with very small businesses downtown, that's fine, that's a decision. But if you're going to hire an economic coordinator for the purpose of getting businesses, they're not going to come until there's a philosophical change amongst some of the boards, and I'm just being honest here. If we can, we talk to each other about can we plan a way around the planning board, right? If we can, if we can do something by right, or we can plan around the planning board, that is a, a way maybe to get something done in town. But generally, the answer's going to be no. The other thing I would just add is constantly tinkering with the zoning bylaw, constantly. I understand it's got problems and issues, but we need certainty, right, in the rules so that you can plan, know what it's going to be, know what to expect, know what you're going to get, so there's going to be some process you can rely on.
Can I ask what type of businesses they run that they manage? Just a.
Somebody wanted to convert, somebody that wanted to convert a commercial, a commercial property into multifamily, somebody that wanted to develop a vacant parcel into something that was commercial, you know, we've got other clients that wanted to expand a business, but you know, it's like, don't, need better places to do it. And I understand the problems with the warehouses, trust me, I completely understand that, but to hire somebody to specifically bring businesses in, when we're telling them, don't come in, isn't, it's not going to be a good use of luck. What if you hire two?
So, so Carrie, Carrie, so Carrie, yeah, sure. I just want to say, in the light of time, I want to make sure Amy, get Amy's question, and then to Rick's point, I thought he made a good point about like, in order to, for the best use of time, for the time we have left of this meeting, what are some things we should think, if you could help facilitate through, like, what are some next steps here? What do you need from us tonight to walk away with? I think we've heard it from a lot, and I don't want to cut anybody off on the boards. If you have something to say, great, like Amy, I know you have something still, but like, how could we best use the rest of our time together tonight, in the spirit of a couple of the last comments that Rick had made?
I guess, I, first I would ask, and this is going to come out frank, but do you feel that Northborough is open for business in any way?
Well, I think Amy has a.
Yeah.
Well, I can comment on the thoughts. It is, you know, I've been on the planning board for 10 years, and we've denied two things. So I don't see why it has to be so negative. Like, we approved a warehouse to expand last year right on Barefoot Road. We approved, pumped up the yards right off of Son of a Hunter, like, the majority of things that come in front of us are yes. Two things in 10 years, so I don't know why.
I don't think I'm a Musakawa American, the thing on Whitney Street, that got, took forever, you voted for it.
That was one.
A year. Starris was a business that was prime, virtually in Berlin, nobody was even going to have to come, the trucks weren't even going to have to come through the center of town in an industrial district, you voted against that.
That was the same.
You got sued by Gutierrez.
So those are the two things, the Bartlett?
But, but those are just the ones I'm, those are just us.
Well, I don't want to make this about specific applications, and by the way, you need a site plan for everything, so you're not going to circumvent the planning board. But.
I didn't say those, like, Todd was on our side of the Northborough resident.
That's the point. You're not going to circumvent, you can't circumvent the planning board. If earlier.
All right, Todd, Todd, thank you, but please let us get on to our meeting. This isn't a personal, this isn't a personal time. Okay, Carrie, how can we use the rest of our time most effectively to get the outcomes of what we need for tonight? Is there a way you recommend, like, getting back to, you know, the plan to make the plan? What does it look like?
I mean, it, so putting together an economic development plan is an option, that's, that's a good start. I know you have a downtown plan, I know you have a master plan. If you have a focus on an economic development plan, if that's the way that you feel is the best way to go, then the committee, then a coordinator, potentially. Being on the same page about the underutilized property is going to be very helpful, I think, for your planning staff. If there's a way, maybe we can discuss that tonight, that would give some direction. Maybe opening, you know, there's, there's a way that towns can stack resources. Northborough doesn't have to pay for every single improvement. There's loads of grant funding that's available. We help our communities all the time stack resources. You can start really small, and you stack them on top of each other, and then you have infrastructure improvement funding, there's ways to move forward on that. I, I think being, being open for business is, is the first, is the first step. If, if you, if there's a negative connotation to doing business in Northborough, that's, that's definitely not going to be helpful, right? If, if that's, somebody has. There's ways to move forward on that. I think being, being open for business is, is the first, is the first step. If you, if there's a negative connotation to doing business in Northborough, that's, that's definitely not gonna be helpful, right? If, if that's, somebody has set the tone that that's the way that Northborough is, it's not gonna benefit the downtown, it's not gonna benefit the underutilized properties, it's not gonna benefit your gateways. I think getting on the same page as far as that goes would, is a huge first step.
I'm sorry. You're, you're running. We're barely walking. And I just have to go back. Yes, we do have a downtown revitalization plan. I would guarantee you, if I pitched a fake proposal right now, you would get conflicting answers as to whether we should or should not move forward with it, based on which board is sitting here. And that is the problem. To Bill's point, if we have subcommittees, boards, committees, and commissions appointed by our select board, and maybe having, you know, other appointments from the other boards, and they pitch an idea, and because it's come to them, and then it doesn't get any further because the appointing authority is not in agreement. What was the point of having that committee? So having a plan, having a, an economic development plan is not going to work any more than our downtown revitalization if it gets stopped because of a different priority on some level of, you know, approval, whether it's select board, planning board, zoning board, committee.
So you have a, you have a list on, on the memo, you have a list that you needed, that needed attention, right? I'll pull it up. Maybe that's the discussion that we should have. That will help the master plan implementation committee move forward.
But, but all we wanna do is say, here is what is a priority on the master plan. Okay, now select board, it's up to you to move it forward, or planning board. And, you know, we've taken little baby steps towards some of them, but again, I have to go back to, we recommended economic development on Route 9. We had opportunity to, to get funding for sewer extension so that we could get the two hotels and the two restaurants up and running. And it was discouraged to apply for it in part because there was uncertainty whether the few residents that were in that area would want to have to pay the bedderment charges. And there was also the concern that we would be helping pay for the modernization of a hotel that had had some crime-ridden problems. And again, okay, so we can't do that. So have a plan that says that we should revitalize Route 9, build the sport fields and stuff. How are we gonna do that if at some point, an authority says, yeah, no, that's not what I want?
Is the infrastructure improvement off the table?
Until next year, Rick.
I was gonna say, the funding comes around again next year, is that...
No. What, that opportunity has sailed. So the Motel 6, so the deal was, he was willing to pay for the design of a sewer extension so that he could hook into the sewer and not have to pay $1.5 million for a new septic system. So because we were unable to apply for the Mass Works grant, he just went ahead and paid the $1.5 million for the septic system. So the opportunity is gone. So he's no longer going to pay for the design of the sewer extension. There are still businesses that are shut down because they have failing septic systems. They're on their own. So i- if I can't get the support to even apply for a grant, then I, I don't know what to do. In order to make Route 9 more successful, there needs to be sewer. So either the town can pay town money, taxpayer money, to extend the sewer, or we can get a grant, in which case the town wouldn't have to pay for the sewer, or nothing happens. That's pretty much where we are.
Not to belabor this specific...
Carrie, could you bring, like, the, make the mic?
Just my clarification. At a, my first select board meeting, as a selectman, was that meeting. The reason why I, we, I did not support it was because the grant application was the next day, and we had just heard about that opportunity. I felt I didn't have enough information and enough deliberation to move forward with it. I think other members felt the same way, I don't wanna speak for them. And there was also some confusion around possible housing units also being put in down there, against like, sort of, what do we greenlighting, what comes down the next few steps? That's why I didn't support it at that time. It's a shame that that opportunity has sailed because I think with additional deliberation and information, it's something we would support. And I don't, I don't think it's, it's DOA with the select board right now, maybe something we can talk about in the future. But, you know, I know we're limited on time, so I don't wanna keep talking. But yeah, it would be nice if we came out of here with maybe one thing we can move forward on. You know, whether that's a committee to even start saying, hey, go to, someone, go to the businesses in town, and what are the issues? I mean, to, to the gentleman's point before, anecdotally, I've heard Northborough is not a place easy to do business, easy to do development. We, we don't, you know, we don't want the town overdeveloped, whatever that means. But that's, just because we maybe, some may disagree with what he said, it doesn't mean he's wrong. And it doesn't mean that that perception doesn't exist.
So Carrie, would it be helpful to pull up some of the questions from MPIC? Are those things that we could maybe knock off to some extent? To Mike's point about what can we come out of here tonight? Mitch, were you gonna say something too?
Yeah, I was gonna piggyback on two prior comments. I mean, there were a number of reasons that that particular request, I think, was denied by the select board. From my perspective, I was very concerned about getting too close to sewer capacity without understanding a plan for what that looked like. Where was the highest priority area in town to expand sewer? And do we have a plan in place to, to truly expand the capacity?
Are you close to sewer capacity?
I, I think with, with that, it would have been very close.
But you have like 20% or something.
Yeah, it would have been, it would have been pretty close. And there, I know there's one residential area in town that's having septic problems that may need sewer, there, you know, and I think we, we look back to staff and through them, probably the sewer commission, to go ahead and, and get us some information with that. I, I, conceptually, I like the idea of expanding sewer onto Route 9. It does a lot of good things, I, you know, appreciate that. The timing didn't work out this time. And pigging back on, on the Northborough thing that I hear a lot of, you know, what Todd mentioned, I hear that a lot. I don't, I'm not a, on a land use board, so I don't know enough of the facts to say he's right or he's wrong. Chances are it's somewhere in the middle. That might be the most important thing that we need to figure out in order to move forward is create a Venn diagram of the things Northborough is willing to have and the things Northborough could potentially have that are realistic businesses that people would want to, to bring here. Hopefully, there's enough of an intersection, once we do that Venn diagram, that we can zero in on that. And if that means maybe we find some avenues, maybe there's, maybe the perception is worse than the reality, I hope that's the case, then maybe the economic development committee or coordinator or somebody can help with the marketing aspect of that. Because even if we, even if that is a problem and we fix the problem, it's gonna be years before the reputation changes. Again, I'm not saying that it's a, that it is a real problem or how much of a real problem is. The, the marketing concern of that is, is definitely real. I've, I've heard, you know, I hear that from Todd, I have heard that from a lot of people before, that they, they have heard through the grapevine, this, that, or the other thing at different levels that Northborough is hard to do business in. We need to, we need to fix that perception.
Yes, yes, Borough.
Yes.
Maybe Borough. Janet.
You know I have to...
Yeah, please.
Hi, everyone. Probably about 10 years ago, I think it was before your time, we actually had a quarterly commission meeting on economic development, and we had commercial real estate agents that were part of the panelists. And there were several communities that were mentioned at the time as being unfriendly, and they even advised their clients before it even gets to the legal aspect, do not bother. So what I'm gonna offer you with Carrie's 24 hours, I know she hasn't used them yet, so we have some leeway here, and Northborough's a great town. Would you be willing to allow Carrie, Carrie has great connections with the corporate real estate world, and we even have some in our own building or right across the street. Would it be okay if she approached a few of them and asked them what they thought? And even maybe probing on the condition of being anonymous, if that's what they wanted, but why that perception exists? Would you all agree to that? And be willing to listen to it?
Yes.
With an open mind?
Yes, I think, I think that would be great.
Yeah. I think there's, on top of the commercial real estate discussions, I think that it would be great to be involved in the 495 Metro West partnership and the corridor nine chamber. I think there's ways that you can be proactive in this space that says, hey, you know what? We're, we're trying, right? We've, we've, we've opened the door. You know, when you, when someone's coming in to start a business, or when someone's coming before a board, it's scary. It's really scary and it's expensive. So if they're walking to a town hall and they're greeted, you know, positively, first step, if they, Bob's very pleasant, if they go into Bob, he explains what they need to do, if they meet with Lori, or if they meet with an economic development coordinator or committee, whatnot, that makes a huge difference. It just, it shows that you're warm and it shows that you're welcoming. If you have an available data, available space database on your website, it says, here we are, you know? This is an op, these are opportunities. This is what we're working on. This is what we're striving for. I, I think there's ways to, to kind of flip the switch here.
Take your threat and turn it into an opportunity.
Yep.
Okay, so that sounds great. If we have, that's a great action item. Mitch, you brought up the Venn diagram of, under what premise could we actually do that? We don't have time tonight to like, sort out, do you wanna do hospitality? Do you wanna do, so what is the best way? Is it through a, and MPIC, by the way, has a memo, so it's not this here, it's some questions on a memo that seems...
They're highlighted here. Those are the ones that are on the memo.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Sorry, okay.
Right, Fran? Yeah.
No, so in a memo that we have, it looks a little, is it, am I blind here? What's happening?
These are the ones? I think, I'm pretty sure the ones...
That's a different...
I think she's talking about this one.
I have a problem.
Yeah, I guess, Rick, would you mind speaking to, for this memo that you have from MPIC, would you mind just speaking to it? If these are things that we should, while we're all here, that would be helpful for the MPIC to...
Are you housing, Rick? Are you housing, Rick?
Oh, I'm sure I'm not. I'm sure. And the memo... Oh, yeah, I'm involved in housing too, but that's not the point tonight.
I think somebody, yeah, interested in housing, right?
Yeah. So basically, you know, the bullet points that we talked about in the memo we sent was determining the future location of the town offices, which has appeared again, downtown revitalization, reaching consensus on the type and amount of housing needed near the downtown, defining design standards for the look and feel of the downtown, determining the level of support the municipal government should provide to the private sector to attract new businesses and assist existing businesses, determine whether the town should expand its commercial industrial tax-based or development info or redevelopment of underutilized properties, creating a downtown revitalization planning committee and providing additional staff to support, considering the role, if any, that the industrial development commission, now inactive, and the assistant town manager should play in economic development. I think those were the points. The first couple were specific to the downtown, the others kind of got to a lot of discussion tonight around just general economic development in the town and the appetite the town had to encourage it and how to do that. So I think that the point that Mitch brought up about some sort of a Venn diagram, a way to sort of compare what people think they want, what the town needs, and how to present that would be important. I still think, you know, some sort of overall planning for what the town infrastructure needs to look like to support growth over time, if in fact, there's a sewer capacity issue, then that needs to be sort of sorted out as to how much can we do. And before we start to do any economic development to attract people to come in that need sewer capacity, it's really kind of useless to do that if in fact, they come in and the answer is, sounds great, we don't have the sewer capacity to do it. So it seemed to be a key part of the plan would be to wrestle to the ground, how much more sewer capacity do we have, where in town we wanna place it, and then decide how that positively or negatively affects commercial development. And there could be other things like that. Once again, I come back to housing as to what the town's position on housing really is going to be, and how that would attract or deter developers, especially in mixed-use kinds of environments. So in my mind, at least, there'd be two key things the plan would wrestle to the ground. You know, infrastructure capacity and desire for housing, how much and what type. And there could be other things also, that I think you start with that plan, and once the combination of the CBA, the planning board, and the, and the select board reach consensus that this is, these kinds of things, how we're gonna do them, then I think you could consider appointing a committee or maybe a coordinator to say, this is what we wanna do, this is what our capacity is, go figure out how best to do it and get back to us with some ideas. But in the absence of that, it's just setting us up for people generating good ideas, someone coming forward to try and do it, and the answer is, for one reason or another, can't do that, sorry. And it just perpetuates kind of the no atmosphere. So I think the plan is critically important. Maybe that's something that you guys can help us do.
I mean, it could address these four points.
Thank you. So the highlighted points up here are on the second page of the memo, the first page that he was discussing. So I think determining the future location of the town offices is probably another meeting.
That's actually one of the things that'll be on our select board meeting this coming Monday, is to, to move, move that discussion forward, at least.
That's great.
Yeah.
Because that opens up opportunities, obviously, you said that. So reaching consensus on the type and amount of housing needed in the downtown, like I mentioned earlier, a lot of the conversations I had were, sounded like they were okay with pockets of housing in the downtown, where deemed appropriate. I think one of the conversations I had was, on the outskirts of downtown would be, would be beneficial. Is there anybody that would like to touch on that? Any?
Brad Blanchett, zoning board. If you go back to the survey results, I think there was close to 50% that strongly oppose repose housing, so more than. So I think, I think we can table housing, to be honest with you, and look at other ways to grow our tax base, talk about some of the ideas. We talked about the gateways as well. I think those are a couple of ideas that we can take away from this meeting.
I think part of the plan would be to start with what, what we have for infrastructure now. What are the things that we can make better? What are the things that we have to work with? We're a town that has seven, seven wells because we have so many, so many water areas that at one point, we had our own wells that we have now given up. They're still there. We still have the water. I think we have to work within the problems that, that we do have with the water. We've got groundwater 1, 2, 3, which is a lot of problems that come forward with any development. It's what are you asking us to do? Space between buildings, that sort of thing. But the, but the infrastructure is very important, and especially with the sewer, because we have a lot of town-owned properties that are even on sewer. So it would be behoove us to look at the town, look at the land that we do own. We actually own land as a town that we receive through tax takeovers that we could sell. We could start a pot of money with those buildings that own those pieces of land that we have, and start going through and chipping that down and seeing what we do have. Because you're right, Route 9 is not well-developed, and the edges of 20 are still, a suite of strip malls all over 20, which half of them are empty. How do you bring, how do you make them usable when retail is flat? There's really not what you can do. They're all one levels, most of them. So I do think that that would be very helpful to start with looking at the whole infrastructure of town, what the benefits and negatives are that we have to work with first before we start, you know, kind of point, when there's a different committee. Oh, yeah. I just asked. Are you familiar with the new tax title laws as far as selling those properties that came in through the tax title process? So you can only keep the amount of fees, the rest of the money that would be in excess, you have to put in escrow, and it would go back to the owners? you have to put in escrow, and it would go back to the owners. Yeah. It just changed, you know, last...
So, I have one more comment over here before...
Yeah, I just want to make sure we touch upon, so we have all these things that we want to talk about, and we don't have, you know, obviously, we can't come up with a housing plan tonight. We can't come up with, you know, design standards for look and feel downtown. So what is the right forum for us to be able to get together and have, you know, the right amount of time, the right, you know, get the right people we need? Staff, obviously, is a great part of this as well. How do we then, you know, where do we make that Venn diagram and, you know, get the results of that survey that you're doing, or plan for infrastructure? Any thoughts on how we could?
Honestly, I know you don't want another plan, but a solid economic development plan will bring those, all of those issues together.
But where, so, sorry, I'm not asking, I'm not articulating, I think. Where, what is the forum for which we create that plan? Do we, we have an economic development, so we are really going to a committee in that case, which Lori doesn't have time to staff? So like, we're in a circle, we're in like a vortex. So how do we, what is step one? We leave this meeting tonight, and I don't want to leave here with like kicking the can. So what is that forum? Where we come back? And who comes back? And by the way, you don't have to answer this on the spot. I'm just like, this is in my head, I'm thinking like...
I'm like, I've got 24 hours, so...
No, I know.
You can have your answer.
No, but I mean, just in the interest of everybody's, you know, time and effort and all of that, and I don't want to, John, I heard you say something like, why, let's talk about housing. I don't want to cut off any comments, so if you want to grab some comments...
I was going to say, you have one last comment.
I'll finish the comment. I want to just give feedback to what I heard Brad say. I too noticed the survey result where the majority of respondents among the board was opposed to new housing. And the majority of the reason for that was this impact on town facilities, schools, and safety and so on. And I'm not sure it's factual, and it brings to light a major area of conflict among the boards, and speaks to one of the obstacles in economic development. We're talking about economic development, which means growing businesses, expanding businesses. Typically, for that, you need more patrons, more customers, more people. And if you expand downtown, in many cases, that involves mixed use of housing and development. I think you would agree. So if, if the, if the consensus is to table housing, to Brad's comment, or to make it a secondary priority, it limits what you could do downtown and in other parts of town. So I think it should be addressed. It's kind of like an underlying barrier that keeps popping up in town and isn't properly addressed for what are the pros and cons of housing? How could we manage it? And what would be the benefits? More people and patrons is one thing, might make the town more walkable because those developments bring people into downtown, and so on. So I would disagree with tabling, and I think it needs to be brought forth and decided upon.
I should have asked her.
So we have a town where a lot of people leave as soon as their kids are at the school. So we're always filling our houses with school-aged children. If we had a town like Hudson, I imagine people retire to Hudson. They like being in a place which is walkable, they can get to amenities. And I'm just wondering about the economic impact of allowing a downtown not to be a center that keeps people resident in the town through their lifespan, instead of staying here for 20 years, selling, and then another family moves into that house.
I think it's a valid point. One of the things I always say is that, you know, businesses and companies used to, they used to go with access in schools, and now they, now they look for walkability trails and breweries and coffee shops. So it's true, people will retire downtown if they have those amenities and if it's walkable. One of the things we noticed on our walking tour is that Northborough does, I mean, 13,000 people in your downtown is, that's a lot, that's a lot of traffic, right? But you have Gale Street, which can connect in the rear, you have Pierce Street.
White Street.
Hudson, what's the other one?
Blake.
Thank you. Blake Street, which is going to be beautiful, I think, when it's designed. I think there's loads of opportunity to create that walkability off of the main drag. We tried six light cycles?
Oh yeah.
We could have crossed the street. Six light cycles. So there's definitely improvements that could be made on the, on the back end of Main Street, and I do think you would see that with housing as well. Oh, hi Stephanie.
Hi. Stephanie Bacon, Town Administrator. About the sewer capacity, we're working on that now. There's a new mayor, there is a new director of sewer, so that's in the works for more capacity. Everyone had valid points tonight, that's for sure. I'm under the mindset of, let's look at what's empty, look at our buildings like White Cliffs, Four West Main, and kill two birds with one stone. One idea I had, the town, moving the town offices to another building, let's be realistic, I don't think that's going to happen because we have a $42 million fire station coming in, we have the Peaslee School that's next in line, and we have to be cognizant of the taxpayers. So a building like Four West Main, we could have, we really need to relocate our recreation center, but that's a big community draw. So possibly, if we worked on even the basement level and put rec down there, it will draw people in, because parents will be dropping off their kids for our little workshops, they'll need a place to go, so maybe a coffee house will come in, businesses will see it, and hopefully fill up the floors. So if we could focus on what is empty, we're paying through the nose, we are not maintaining these buildings as best as we could, it's just an idea, but again, everyone had great points, and I'm willing to work in whatever direction.
Yeah, so I, back to the housing question, there's, there's comments from all levels, all, you know, parts of the state and the country, that if you build housing, you're, you know, it's going to support your local businesses. But are, where, what, what numbers do you need to do that? I mean, like, for every business, how many, how many, how many adults do you need to support it? And how do you guarantee that?
With that, with that is, you have, you're talking to me?
I'm just a legal guy.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but we can look into it for sure.
Yeah, because they would do the marketing.
Yeah, they would, they would do an analysis work.
Thanks. I think what we're missing now is the businesses, right? Like, Blue Square would be interesting, right? It's a, anyone's done there, that's really good. So it's a good business coming into Northborough. We'll see about the bigger place. But I do think that if we get the right businesses, we'll have a better conversation. And how, where do we want things to be? Route Nine should be different than downtown. Twenty West, Twenty East should be different. So somehow, we have to come out of this with three or four priorities. And I'm a big fan of the committee. We should do the committee, get it going, I don't know how we support it, valid point. But like, we have people that care, and somehow, we have to bring this to a level where we can talk about it. And this isn't it, it's too big. We have to come back to people and bring stuff for feedback. But I'm encouraged by tonight, not sure how we leave it, but I'm encouraged by the fact we're having a conversation tonight.
What was the first business?
It's Blue Square. It's out of Hoppington, grain owners. Go there, like Texas BBQ was an awesome spot, they knew what they were doing. We need places where people identify with the town, and then they want to stay in the town. I don't identify with Amazon and FedEx. I don't identify with empty banks. I don't identify with empty realtor spots, empty gas stations. Help us identify with Northborough, and people will stay in Northborough as long as you don't do $40 million fire stations over and over again. Because of taxes. Mitch?
Hey, town voted for it, not just me.
You're in the meeting.
Since you passed the mic by me, I decided to build on your idea. Why don't, one positive thing that you can think about is, why don't you look at the places that people do identify and come to Northborough for? You know, like Romaine's Restaurant, to name one. Many people identify that as a very good restaurant. And others. And then see what, one of the good things about those businesses, maybe it gives you a direction for how future businesses would succeed.
I drove, I drive over an hour a couple of days ago.
Yeah, people do. My uncle drives 40 miles to go to Romaine's. No, yeah. Yeah. Lori, is there any, any final words for me that we can, anything that we missed? You have one? Oh, hold on, my boss wants to talk.
Can I get two after? I'm sorry. Can I get two after?
Yeah. So one thing I want to mention, you know, there are a lot of things up in the air from this conversation, and it's really great. It's very unusual for us to see all of these boards together, and it's, it's so impressive, and it talks about your passion for trying to improve the quality of life and the businesses, and what you feel is important in Northborough, and I'm so impressed with that. But I do want to mention, if, if you want to tap into us, I mean, Carrie's still working on her 24 hours, we're good with this, right? We're not going to, we're not going to lead you.
Julian's never stopped going to meetings.
Yeah, I know. But Julian is also on a committee that's called our Physical Development Committee, and they oversee our district local technical assistance funding, which Lori's very familiar with. And, and I do have to give a huge shout out to Lori in her prior position in Milbury. I still use her as an example of cobbling together funding. There's no one better than Lori Connors, and you need to tap into that, but you need to give her that guidance of what to look for. Between the MVP program, the green communities, the mass works, probably the community one-stop, and everything else, Lori drew all of those funds into the town of Milbury, and it's so impressive what she was able to do there. And I know she can bring that same strength, that same ability to this town as well. She just needs that guidance, and the support to do that as well. But to get back to the district local technical assistance funding, it's funding that the regional planning agencies receive through the governor's budget every year. We have just under $300,000 that allows us to offer technical assistance to our 40 communities. It's a competitive process, but the Physical Development Committee has been very good, and most communities have been awarded the funding. So if you want us to continue to work with you on this various project, or maybe to pick a topic versus trying to tackle all five questions at the same time, maybe you could decide if you wanted to move forward on that district local technical assistance funding, since you're publicly meeting in boards, to give that support for Lori or someone else. I hate to put more work on you, Lori, but, but to put together an application to support this process. And, and to be able to tap into Carrie and our other 60 staff members. I know we've done the audit, you know, with the transportation department, but we have really great staff that can help all of you and move you forward.
Could I, could I ask for an informal show of hands as far as members of these key boards that would be supportive of having CMRPC continue to work on something? That's exactly what I suspect. I think you have your answer. I would...
And it doesn't cost you any...
Yeah, we particularly like that. Yeah, and I would, I would ask that, you know, the two of you, and anyone else in your office that needs to decompress a little bit about the, the last couple of hours, watch the video and everything else, and then be in touch with Stephanie on, on particular proposals that you might have, you know, what you think is the next thing we should work on. Because we could, we could come up with 50 different ideas. You're the experts. You know, you're here because you have proven your expertise. At least from my perspective, tell us what we should do next.
That's a great idea.
Put together a proposal, and then we will, you know, if it needs select board approval, planning board approval, whatever else, we'll deal with that. But I think the show of hands tells you we want to do this.
The D L T A project wouldn't necessarily have to be an economic development plan. It could be a report, it could be technical assistance, we could work together with separate groups.
The next thing, there's, there are many steps ahead for Northborough. I think we've, everyone will agree to that. I don't know what the next thing is, but I trust you, you will be able to help us figure that out.
And we can work, if they'll have us, we can work with the Master Plan Implementation Committee as well. Yeah? Yeah, that's a great idea.
Right. I know that Carrie has a piece of paper where you are supposed to distribute out so that you folks could vote on your top priorities. So I'm interested in seeing, after hearing everybody's comments, you know, what, the ideas that you each had, if your priorities might change. So when you've heard from others, what are your thoughts? And I'd be really interested in seeing the results, because that, your answers there will help me and Bob and the Master Plan Implementation Committee find a direction. So I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and participating. It's been really interesting for me to hear everybody's feedback in this particular type of forum, and I was very intrigued by the survey results as well. So I personally don't feel like it was a waste of time. I definitely got something out of this, and I hope you all did as well. And I look forward to working with CMRPC and Carrie on the next steps. I do think some additional planning would help kind of weed out and determine what the priorities are, so, thank you.
Just for clarification, Carrie, is there a dead, for the D L T A, is there a deadline?
I think the solicitation has actually just gone out, and it won't be until, I think, January...
January 9th.
Yeah, January 9th.
So Lori, I assume you'll be involved with that. Do you need a board vote at all? It will help you while we're all sitting here to get official votes, or you don't need that?
Well, I'd be curious as to what it is that you want me to apply for. Like, are you interested in pursuing the economic development plans?
So for this group here, Mitch had everyone raise their hands, we're interested in pursuing the help from CMRPC, but if Lori has a grant due on January 9th, we need to give her direction on what this is a grant for. Is it, go ahead Mitch.
Yeah, I would, honestly, I would, I would ask Carrie to go ahead and say, based upon, think about it some more, based upon tonight, and discuss with Lori, discuss with Steph, anybody else you need to, and then come back to us and say, I think the next thing Northborough needs is X. I trust the expert to give us that guidance.
All right, sounds good.
And Lori, do you need actual votes to, at all? Okay, perfect.
No, I mean, I think it's clear that the support of the town is there, so you probably don't need that support letter.
I guess it would just be...
Yeah.
Which I believe it was.
And so Mitch asked, I believe, of the unanimous hand raise? Are there any objections?
I don't think I missed any people that didn't raise hands, yeah.
So no, no objections?
And I do think that I need a sign off from you as the chair of the planning board for district technical assistance.
But not a vote?
No, just sign off from you.
I was just going to read in for the, for the recording of what this says quickly before...
Do you, yeah.
So it says, please rank the following from one to eight, one being the most important. Create a Northborough Economic Development Committee. Hire an economic development coordinator for Northborough. Concentrate on the gateways to your community. Work towards further activating the Aqueduct Trail for connectivity. Create an industrial property study. Explore hospitality uses along the Route Nine corridor. Focus attention on White Cliffs property and reuse plan. Focus attention on Four West Main and reuse plan. And then I put other, just in case. All right, I think this concludes our economic development forum.
Okay, we have to close out our meetings as well. Do you, do you want to collect these?
Yeah, you can just leave them, I'll collect them. I just want to thank you all so much for taking the time to come here tonight, to have this conversation, and...
Yeah, we need to teach more.
Taking the time to have the tours and the interviews for me. Thanks.
Thank you. This is great.
You want me to ask for motion, Stu, chair?
Do we just ask for our own?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay, any concluding words though for you?
Um, no, I think just simply thanking Carrie and all the work that she and CMRPC have done, and all the work that the town staff and all the volunteers have done to support her efforts.
And Kaylee.
We wouldn't have...
Yes.
Kaylee, too. We, we wouldn't have, yes, Kaylee, to, to record it. Always the, the invisible staff member back there. This will allow the public to hear. We need motions to adjourn from each of our boards to conclude.
To adjourn the ZBA meeting?
Second.
You just say, y'all in favor?
I'm all in favor.
These are easy when you're in person.
Um, is there a motion from the select board to adjourn the meeting? Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. To adjourn, all those in favor? Okay, I see that as unanimous. Lisa, I assume you were in favor of adjourned?
No.
All right, we're opposed.
Come on, there's cookies over there. Let's go there.
We, we can socialize after, that's fine.
Motion to adjourn the planning board meeting? Second? All in favor?
Uh, MPIC, is there still a quorum here?
I'm not sure there is. Something didn't need to adjourn.
Okay.
This meeting is adjourned.
We are concluded. Thank you very much, everybody.